The budget is like, yeah. Yeah, talk to the financial people. I'm out.
Full board tonight, I like that.
No, I want to make sure you got it.
I appreciate that.
You gonna go?
No, I think they missed that.
It's a Friday night.
Can I grab your seat?
Yeah, it's just windy. It's at 4:30.
No, with like a L. L, you'll find all your budget orders. Your orders should be pretty straightforward.
Most of the hard work's already done anyway.
Committee, yes.
Nope. Unless I did.
That's, that's.
That's what I'm doing.
That's, yeah.
Are we doing this?
Oh, we were.
We're not. Okay, great.
Yeah, she had him move the water bottles. It's like they're taking a picture of us at the desk.
Oh, okay.
We're gonna start the meeting, okay?
Not quite sure.
Ready?
Not quite sure what's going on.
Everybody looks ready.
Looking for advice.
He's ready.
Make sure you sign that with that pen.
No, you can leave on the table. Very cool.
Good evening, everybody. We'd like to call this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council to order. Would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please have a brief moment of silence in recognition of veterans and those who have passed. Thank you. Just wanted to remind everybody that this meeting is being televised and aired live over local access cable. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our previous meeting, which we do not have them tonight, so we'll move on. I do not have any announcements this evening, no proclamations. I'll open the floor to any citizens that wish to speak during the Citizens' Open Form portion of our meeting. Any citizens here that wish to speak during the Citizens' Open Form portion of the meeting, please step up to the podium and address your concerns. Seeing none, I'll move on to appointments. We do not have any appointments this evening.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Given that it's not 7:35 yet, I make a motion to take Item G out of order.
There's a motion to take Item G out of order. Is there, there's a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item G, licensed transactions. I don't see any in my folder this evening.
Motion to take Item H out of order.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second to take Item H out of order. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
To take, oh, I'm sorry.
There are no presentations this evening, so we'll move on to the next item.
Motion to take Town Manager's Report out of order, Item I.
Second.
There's a motion to take the Town Manager's Report out of order, and there's a second. Any discussion? Mr. Columbotes?
I was wondering, is there any way to not take this up yet? Could we take another item out of order to kill time?
Sure, I'll withdraw the motion and I'll, I'll make a motion to take Item J out of order.
How about K?
Item K out of order.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second to take Item K out of order. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Motion to take Item L out.
Wait, let me just check my folder.
Could be a committee report.
There's no committee reports in my folder. Is there any committees that wish to report this evening?
Sure, the Budget Finance has met on the budget items that you see before you and are recommending the items to the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committees wish to report? Counselor Loesch.
The rules and procedures held their first orientation of a counselor today, which I thought went well. We will be doing that hopefully going forward for volunteers and thinking of ways to make joining government more accessible and understanding.
Did he pass the test?
Not yet.
Thank you very much. Seeing the time being at 7:35, I'll like to go back to Item F on the agenda for our public hearing. For the time being, 7:35, I will open the public hearing, which is the FY '20 Annual Town Budget. There's been a lot of work that's gone into this. I'll open the public hearing. I'd like to hear from, from anyone from the public that wishes to speak, but before that, I'm going to turn it over to the Finance Director, who will give an overview of this year's fiscal '20 budget, that he has probably given this presentation 20 to 30 times, but this is the, the night that it all counts, when we as a council take a vote on the town's budget starting July 1. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Solomonti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council members, citizens, on behalf of the Town Manager, I present to you this evening a balanced budget. I will cover the highlights and then certainly any questions that, that the council members have, I will certainly do my best to answer effectively. The first portion of the presentation just speaks to the, the sources of revenue, which is the first part of the budgetary process, when we identify what we believe we will have to share through our revenue sharing model with the school district, as well as what we believe we will have in order to fund our operating budgets. There are four major categories. The first category is your property tax, which is your real estate and personal property. This year, $46,268,106 was our estimate. We'll speak a little bit to the supplemental appropriation, because the new growth figure that we estimated has increased based on the hard work of our assesses office, and we're able to formulate and capture that data much sooner, so that number did change. But in the budget before you this evening, $500,000 was the new growth, and that's that $46,268,106 for total property tax revenue for FY '20. The state receipts, we're showing no change. The process at the state level goes through a number of steps. At this point in time, there's no significant, and in fact, no real minor changes to the numbers that we've been using since the budgetary process began. $4,415,235 is what the town will receive for state receipts. A big portion of the budget in, in the discussion process is our local receipts. It's really small in comparison to your $46,268 for your property tax, but this is where the, the Finance Department Finance Team has done a lot of work, so that we're making sure that we maximize what we can generate and use in our budgetary process for our local receipts, and also make sure that we have some reserves at the end of the year and we don't have any shortfall. This year, the total amount in local receipts is $5,456,307. That's the Category 3 that I referred to at the beginning in the, in the revenue categories. And the last is what we refer to, transfer or reserves or other available funds. It can be referred to from time to time. The total is $2,544,325 this year. I think the significant items to reference is the receipts reserved for appropriation from the ambulance fund. This year is $1,750. The, the concern is maybe that figure is rising a little bit too quickly as a funding source to offset our fire and ambulance operation, but we feel very confident that the revenue that we're, we're seeing achieved this year and what we project forward will be enough to sustain this number and a nominal annual increase to offsets rising costs in the, excuse me, rising costs in the fire and the ambulance service. So we're, we're comfortable in the $1,750 today, and we're also comfortable in that escalating at a pace that will be appropriate to support the fire operation. The other amount of $344,582, worth noting, that's the transfer from the enterprise funds to offset expenses that are incurred in the general fund. So it's just a transfer to offset actual costs that we pay. And the total revenue being $58,683,973. We also, in the sources and uses document, have a section that deals with the, an overview of the use of funds. It's broken up into general government, public safety, roadways, health and human services, culture recreation. There's debt that's broken down into three categories. We do that for transparency and our ability to communicate to the public the different types of debt that we have on the books, and the reason that we're categorizing it differently is because it's funded from a different funding source or funding mechanism. And it's, and it's important, so when we're planning, we understand what's going to impact the levy and, and what's going to be funded through other funding sources. Then we have our benefits, liability insurance, and then the gas and oil that's unallocated, meaning that's the cost of the fuel that's delivered at our highway barn, but then is dispersed through use of the town vehicles, police, fire, highway, and so forth. So although we budget this in one, one expense line, such as, as indicated here under gas and oil, that in fact is used and consumed by all the various departments in the town. So the, the general fund we refer to as general government and public safety and those other categories that I, that I alluded to, that budget portion is $25,910,02. The, we then break out the next category to identify all the related school costs. We have the regional school district assessment. We have the excludable debt that is part of the debt assessment from the regional school district. We have the Bristol Agricultural School tuition, Bristol Plymouth School tuition, and Norfolk County Aggie School tuition, and transportation. That, that cost in this year's budget is $31,863,626. The total general fund operating budgets, including education, $57,774. The last category of offsets that we are charged by the state, so the revenue that I referred to up above, that state revenue, they also reduce that state revenue by these charges, state assessments, transportation assessments, county assessments totaling $409,745. We also budgeted $500,000 for snow and ice deficit, bring our total use of funds to $58,683,973, which gives you a balanced budget that's before you today. That's the general sources and uses. I will, in the, in the packets and what's on the town's website, there's a detail that breaks down each individual budget. Unless the council would like me to go further in detail, that's the overall balanced budget that you have be, before you this evening.
Thank you very much. I also want to point out before we open it up to the public is that there have been many, many meetings these past few months on the Budget and Finance Committee, the Finance Committee, and, and other meetings throughout the town where discussions have taken place. I know this is a, a five-minute synopsis of spending $57 million, but believe me, there's been a lot of, a lot of work behind, that's going on behind the scenes. A lot of it has been taped, so those meetings are out there. So when, having said that, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public here that wishes to speak in, in opposition or in, in opposition to the budget or in favor of the budget? Is there anybody in the public here that wishes to speak, first of all, in opposition? Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to speak in opposition of the proposed budget? Seeing none, is there anybody here from the general public that wishes to speak in favor of the proposed budget? Anybody here wishes to speak in favor of the proposed budget? Seeing none, I will, are there any general questions from the public regarding the budget? Any general questions? I think I kind of went backwards. There any general questions from the public about the budget? Seeing none, I will now open it up to my colleagues on the council. Are there any comments from the council, counselors about the budget? I'll refer to the Chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee. I'm sure he's got some comments to say. Mr. Wood.
Just, just the voting format, and we can, when we get to that, we'll talk about, with the attorney, just to make sure we do it correctly, but usually we don't vote revenue. We only vote expense. You'll see on the actual order that there are some sources of funding, and we will have to vote those. What I, what I have to remind people here is that ambulance receipts are a vote of two-thirds, not by majority, so if you have any questions about ambulance receipts at this point, you should, you should bet them now, but, but they're firmly supported by the inflow of fees coming into the ambulance service right now, so there's no concern from Budget Finance or Finance Committee that I'm aware of, so we should be good on that. We have gone through great detail during the sessions to understand line items within each department and how that breaks out, and talk about any structural changes or needs and things like that, so I think we're in good form.
Any other comments from councils? Counselor Fitzgibbons?
I just have a question for the Finance Director, and sorry to put you on the spot, Mr. Solomonti, if you don't know the answer, that's okay, because I'm going to assume.
That's great, all right.
The revenue that you're starting with, and I understand, Mr. Wood, we, we don't vote on revenue, that's your job to tell us what it is, and we vote on the expenses that we can spend with it, and we could spend half of that if we wanted to, and put the half in the bank if we wanted to, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. But that revenue that we started with, how much more is it than the budget last year? What percent? About 3.1?
A little bit higher than that.
3 maybe, somewhere in, in, in the low threes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. That's all.
Any other questions from the councils regarding the presentation, the budget for FY '20? Anybody else? Mr. Columbotes?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Solomonti, can you highlight just what might be the most dramatic changes from last year's budget in terms of department expenditures or what's, what's different from last year?
Sure.
In, in the most general?
I think the general changes were, I guess, the most impactful, is that we actually began to look at the operation of, inside the general government. So we did some reorganization. We didn't need to fill a position in the Finance Department, all right? Because we put in place some automation, new technology, so we're able to take those resources and allocate them to community economic development, some of them to the Town Manager's Office. Also looked at the Town Manager's Office and general government to look at the, the staffing. We didn't add headcount per se, but we looked at when replacement of, of staffing was to occur, what we were going to need to do from a funding standpoint in order to attract the talent that we wanted to attract. So that was an element. And there were some other minor changes in the number of man-hours, if you will, FTEs, about, I think, a, a half a person in, in, in this, in total. So in general government, we really just did some reallocating of resources and meeting of whatever contractual obligations that were required. No major changes on the, on the expense side. I think in the public safety side, it's fair to say we had contractual obligations that we had to account for. Not any major increases in expenses. We, we did take into consideration that, you know, in FY '19, we start, started to fund those additional eight firefighters that were part of the SAFRA grant. Last year, we transitioned that with some leftover funds that were in their operating budget. This year, you're seeing the increase in the use of ambulance receipts to take care of that additional funding, so it's not taxing the levy, it's being funded through those ambulance receipts, that, that shift. So you'd see that in it, in the public safety. On the, I think in, in the other years, what we did, we did again, some work in the Highway Department. As I was talking to Ron, our Highway Superintendent, the other day, although we only set in the original budget, man-hour was for two summer employees, if you will, what he's excited about is he could take those two individuals, put them on lawnmowers, and now he has experienced help that he can have do the things that he needs to do. So although it was a huge change, it was something that was impactful for him. We also did additional work that helped him get ready, and that was the capital plan that you guys, you folks approved a while back, that's given him the equipment. So we were able to see him, as he says, utilizing the equipment with this additional help. There was some additional funding for some expenses there. We also brought the engineer into a full-time role as the town engineer. What was great about that is we're going to be offset that expense. If you look at the other available funds, that's a funding source that's coming through some other funds that's going to help to free that cost, and we budgeted that particular department of one, and we also funded the expenses necessarily, necessary to do that. I think the final highlights would be, you know, our pension and benefits. This year, we were lucky, Mayflower increase was what you would consider nominal as a percent. However, we did see a lot of change. Number of employees became 26 years old, and under the law, they now had to go off family plans, or we had other, what you would call qualifying events. So saw some significant increases there, because we replaced, in one case, in a number of cases, retirees, and now we have to fund the insurance for the retirees, and then we have the new employee come onboard. So that's where we, fortunately, we had a low percentage in the Mayflower cost of our health insurance increase, but we did have some qualifying events that impact that. I think, if I'm not mistaken, that's the major highlights in this year's budget, mostly funding the services that were in place, making some incremental changes, and I think in the end, the total headcount increase was 1.45 for the entire general fund operation.
One more thing. Is there, we've talked a lot about building maintenance. Is that, does that appear in the budget?
Yes. Again, there was a position that we needed to fund at a higher level. We made that adjustment, and, and now at this point, that position has been posted. It's on the town website, and the Assistant Town Manager is working diligently to fill that position, as well as a, a number of vacant positions.
Is, is there any money in the budget for contracting for building maintenance?
Yeah.
Be on that in-house?
There's definitely more room, more work we need to do there. Last year, what happened, and it was really at the tail end of FY '18, the town had to take responsibility for maintenance of a, a number of tracks of town-owned property, if you will, mowing and, you know, edging and all that, general maintenance. That wasn't budgeted for in '18, so in '19, that, that, we had to consume those, those particular services. So we haven't advanced it as much as we would have liked in FY '20. That's something we're going to have to look more closely in FY '21.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak regarding the budget? Counselor George?
Thank you. Tony, can you go back to the revenues real quick, scroll?
Okay, which, I think I'm there. Which, which revenue?
So I guess my question is, do we have any money coming back to us from the golf course?
In the order that you have before you for the golf course, there's $100,000 that's going to be transferred into, not, not into the general fund, but into the stabilization fund, because the, the thinking was, when that all took place, that, that's where that money would have gone, so we're, we're placing that. So if you go to the, one of the last line items in the golf course.
And then after that $100,000, do they owe us anything after that?
Legally, we can't recoup any additional costs. In order to balance the budget this year, and I know I'm jumping ahead, and I can certainly answer it then, we're, they're, they're planning on paying back $100,000 of the $200,000 that's due this year. We're holding that off into the, to the fall. If the revenue comes in solid, then we would be able to come back in the fall and say there's an additional $100,000 that they can, that they can pay back. But at this point, the, the revenues are certainly not growing. The whole golf industry, we just received a report recently, is down 5%, and so we're watching it very closely. So to be conservative, we're paying back 100 in this, in this budget and in the order, and maybe an additional $100,000 later in the fall.
And our weather this month hasn't cooperated with generating revenue.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Anyone else have questions regarding the budget?
I just have, I just have a couple of comments, and that is that there will be a supplemental budget coming before the council next week that we discussed last week. It's before the Finance, Budget and Finance Committee now, so you'll see that on the agenda for next week, that will appropriate additional funds to the school department and highway department. I have one question regarding, we had a discussion, we had a couple of months ago, the pot-time steward, steward position that we wanted to, to fund at $15,000. How, even though it's not in the operating budget or the supplemental budget that I saw before this meeting, how, how will we handle that?
So we're going to encumber $15,000, been directed by the Town Manager to encumber $15,000. You'll see a, a transfer order that will take place in about two weeks or so, and we will be moving some funds into a, the line item for, for that position, and then it will be encumbered into FY '20.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Any discussion? Does this require a roll call? No, no roll call.
No roll call. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The budget hearing is now closed. We'll be taking that up for a vote in a little while. I'll move on to item I, town manager's report. And I did not say in the beginning of the meeting that we have not promoted our finance director to town manager. The town manager's out of town on personal business tonight, so he is filling in. Is there a town manager's report tonight?
No.
None. Okay, so we'll move on.
Can I address something, hundred?
Okay, sure.
I'm not sure if this is the best place. And I guess my question is directed to Attorney Rollins. In light of the concern about the violation of open meeting law and town manager report be kind of talking about stuff that no one anticipated, would now be the right time for me to convey to the town manager stuff I'd like covered next week?
Yes.
Okay. So I've got a short laundry list. Perhaps you'll be the messenger. I'd like to get-
Do you want me to be the messenger?
If you would.
I would say send him an email.
Send him an email, but everyone hears it, right? So I'd like to hear about the relocation of the fire department, the central fire department, where that process is, if we found another spot to put it. I'd love to get a sense of our overall debt load at this point, outstanding bonds and when they'll be satisfied. Because I know we've got some bond issues coming up, not to distant future, so it'd be good to get a sense of where we stand now in terms of debt. In regard to the town hall, I'm interested to hear where the process of putting the town hall in the National Register of Historic Places is, where that process is. It's been a while, it's actually, that should have been done by now, but we ran into some trouble. And also, the town manager has talked about emptying out that building, and I'm wondering where that process is. And lastly, I brought up several months ago, my concern about the fact that some of the internal striping on some private parking lots, commercial lots in town, is pretty much gone. At Walgreens lot, for instance, coming off Summer Street, the divide of between the inbound lane and the outbound lane is completely gone. So I'm just concerned that that might generate some problems, and town manager was unsure what our, what sort of control we had over that. So I'd like to hear an update on that. So I'll be sending this along, and I encourage anyone else to chime in if there's something else they want to add.
Or you can just send him an email.
Email's best.
Okay, moving on. Are there any discussions this evening? I know there's nothing under that category, so we'll move on. Committee reports, we did that. Legislation for action, we're taking up item L, legislation for action, the FY '20 budget orders. The Budget and Finance Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of the following budget orders with amendments to Orders 0 FY '20-002 and FY '20-003. The Finance Committee, I believe, met last night and voted for, voted to approve these orders. So we'll act under Order A, FY '20-001, the budget order, the FY '20 annual town budget.
Mr. President? I'll make a motion first to, to, sorry. I'll make a motion to approve the ambulance funds of $1,750,000, which is in excess of $1 million, which is the ordinance, and requires a two-thirds vote approval to use that.
Second.
Any discussion? A motion and a second to approve the ambulance reserve, ambulance receipts reserved amount, as stated. Any discussion? All those, all those, roll call, vote on that? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, now we're going-
I'll make a motion to approve 2020-001, the annual town budget.
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second to approve the FY '20 annual town budget. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, that does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Chase? Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Motion carries. We now have a budget for FY20. Let's move on to the other budget orders. FY20002, the Water Enterprise Fund budget as proposed and amended.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to amend as indicated.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve, and there's a motion and a second to approve as amended.
We'll vote on the amendment first.
Vote on the amendment first. Any discussion on the amendment?
Just a discussion was that the original numbers were preliminary numbers, and the Finance Director and his staff recommended the changes.
Okay, any discussion on the amendment? That does require a roll call vote? That does not. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So now we're voting under the actual budget order, which we have a motion and there's a second on that. That does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Here we have that budget. Acting under item C, Order FY20003, budget order FY20 Sewer Enterprise Fund budget. There is a proposed amendment as well. Mr. Wood, do you want to lay that one down?
Again, the number, the original numbers were preliminary numbers, and the Finance Director and his staff made adjustments before it got to us.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to amend as indicated.
Second.
There's a motion to approve and there's a motion to approve as amended. Any questions on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Now, we're acting under the main order. There has, it's been motioned and second, any discussion on the main order? This does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
That order has passed. We're acting under Order D, FY2004 budget order, FY20 Transfer Station Enterprise Fund budget.
Motion to approve.
Second. There's a motion and there's a second to approve. Any discussion?
Just, I think this is, if you look at the enterprise funds, you can only do expenses against proposed, against projected revenues, and as you recall, at the end of the fiscal year, we had a, we had a transfer on this, so this is balanced right now, but we need to vote it. We might have some additional items toward the end of the year, but, but this is good for 2020.
Any other discussion on the sewer, the Transfer Station Enterprise budget? This does require a two-thirds vote, so, and it does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, we have a Transfer Station budget. Moving on to item E, FY2005 budget order, FY20 Old Scotland Links Golf Course Enterprise Fund budget.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion to approve and there's a second. Any discussion?
Get out there and golf even on rainy days.
No further discussions, does require a roll...
Actually, I have one through you to Mr. Solomonti. So, just so we're clear, Mr. Solomonti, you mentioned that this year, we're hoping to receive $200,000 in repayment from this fund. We've already received, we, we have budgeted $100,000 but want to hold off on the other $100,000. Is that it, though? What about future years? Is, can we expect to essentially get paid back for all these years we've been subsidizing?
No.
No? Okay. Thanks.
Any other discussion? This does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
And, Mr. President, I'll recuse myself from the authorization of revolving funds.
Counselor Wood has recused himself from the next item, Authorization of Revolving Funds, so we will move on to item F, FY2006 Authorizing of Revolving Funds. Is there a motion to approve?
Approve.
Second. There's a motion to approve and there's a second. Any discussion on the revolving accounts to approve? Seeing none, this does require a roll call vote?
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
So we have, the revolving funds have been approved, all our budget orders have been approved this evening. Mr. Wood has rejoined the council. We'll move on to item M, old business. Don't see anything in my packet. New business, do not see anything in my packet. Citizens comments, are there any citizens here that wish to speak in the citizens comments portion of the meeting?
Good evening, Jenny Burr, 45 Hartsford Way. First of all, I know I said this last week, but you all aren't here, so I'm going to repeat myself. I wanted to say thank you. Thank you very much for all the hard work and countless hours you've spent looking at the budget. I understand balancing the budget is one thing, and of course, most of us are here for the school budget, and so I wanted to take that opportunity to say thank you. As a citizen, however, I would like, in the future, to get more updates from, I'm assuming there must be a committee for the town revenue, you know, what are we doing to bring businesses? What are we doing to better the aesthetics of our town? And I think that, that would really help us understand and have better goals to reach this 3% revenue that you've predicted, which I'm sure the money looks great, 3% on a big number is a lot of money, but I just feel as though we need to, just like we did with the school budget, with our big thinking, we, we need to dig down deeper and, and really, you know, figure out how to bring more revenue to our town. So as a citizen, I'm just asking if we can have updates of that at these meetings, that would be wonderful. And then, of course, I look forward to next week's meeting to understand the supplemental budget review. So, thank you very much.
Is there anybody else wish to speak during the citizens comments portion of our meeting? Anybody else? Seeing none, I'll move on to council comments. Are any councils have any comments then? I'll begin on my far left with Counselor Fitzgibbons.
First of all, thank you to the Budget and Finance Committee of this board. You guys did yeoman's work, and I appreciate that, and I think you, you had a, a big task in front of you and you met it well. Thank you to the Finance Committee for, you know, getting together and working through it with you guys to make sure that everything worked for the town. Thank you to the School Committee and the Superintendent for working very hard to get to a number that we could, we could work with here in the town and the town manager for, and the town Finance Director for, for getting to that number and getting to a good spot. That, that's great teamwork, and I'm proud of it, and I'm, I'm very happy about it. I just want to introduce a note of caution, just in general, because we have negotiations coming up with our own collectively bargained employees and whatnot. We heard from the Town Finance Director that our revenues are growing at 3.3% a year, and that's, you know, been that way for a while. We'd like to see it grow, as Ms. Burr indicated, and that's a longer-term solution, but anytime we start to increase any expenses more than that 3.3%, what's going to happen is, we're going to squeeze money out from somewhere else, and, and that, that becomes difficult after a while. And, and we can certainly, in, in any one year, if, if there's a need for an operational override, that can obviously always be proposed to the voters, but an operational override only does this to your revenue, it only jumps at one year. That trend of 3.3% continues on. You can't keep jumping at 4% or 5% every year, so when we negotiate contracts and we look at the contracts, we have to make sure that we're staying within what we think we can stay within, or at least, you know, be upfront about it and say this, and, and we're going to have to do that about a few things here, especially roadway safety, that, that may require an operational override to help the Highway Department out to get our roadways fixed. Obviously, we've heard from Mr. Candido over in Mr. Wood's district for a long time about the state of Stetson Street, we've heard, and, you know, we're, we're getting to a point with Wynwood and Deerfield Drive that it's becoming undrivable, and we don't have the money in our operational budget to pay for that. So, we just have to be very open and honest and transparent with those conversations and say, yes, this is a one-time bump, or no, this is a long time thing and we can maintain the trend that we need to, or we're going to have to come back again, because our trend can't even sustain the increases that we're projecting. So, a great job to everyone this year, but just caution, because every year's different and every year's more challenging. Thank you.
Columbodis.
I welcome Mr. Fitzgibbons' comments. I think, you know, while this budget, you know, turned out better than I think we all expected, especially with the supplemental appropriations that are forthcoming, there's a, there are a lot of structural deficits in town. The roads are kind of the most vivid reminder of just how under-invested we are in a way. If you look at our staffing at Highway Department, we're way, way low on that. So, yes, there's a lot of hard work to, to be done, and, and we're by no means out of the woods. To Ms. Burr's question about, you know, very, I think, really pressing question is how, how do we generate more revenue to kind of get ourselves out of this? We're doing a lot. I mean, I, I know there's a constant refrain, people are tired of studies and plans, but the comprehensive planning overhaul that we're doing, the town manager's office is looking into, you know, data analysis, kind of contracting out to get more data about, you know, recruiting businesses and private investment, so there's a lot forthcoming, and I think it would be valuable, once we're done with this budget process, to perhaps have the Community and Economic Development Director come in and give us an overview of what, what we can hope for. I just want to remind everyone that a large part of, of kind of this deficit we've gotten into is, is a function of us not having a real viable planning department. For years, you know, we didn't have any, we had a 20-hour wait person, and this in the midst of tremendous residential growth, and then we had to kind of fit some starts and part-time people, and we really haven't had the continuity in that department that a town needs to be successful. And with Ms. Burke, you know, in, onboard for the last year or so, we, we see just tremendous results, and she's really kind of making up for a lot of long-term deficits, but just now getting to the point where she can take off, and, and so I, I, I'm really hopeful, so keep an eye out. Thank you.
Counselor Loesch?
Nothing tonight, I just welcome everyone to volunteer. We have a number of committees, and all meetings are posted, and we are always open to hearing from our people, so email, call, we're here to listen and to propose new things.
Rushton?
Well, I wasn't going to say anything, but if I could go off Counselor Fitzgibbons' statement, you know, understanding some of the challenges that we have, particularly the school district, is of paramount concern of mine, especially anticipating the prospect of building a new school and what it's going to take to staff that. I can't reiterate to everybody the amount of mental health issues in the K-12 system and higher education, and I think one of the things that I've been hearing for over a decade is, you know, this discussion about growth, and I really think that, as a council, there has to be enormous pressure put on the revenue side. We're not going to be able to squeeze contracts as much as we'd like to. Costs are escalating everywhere and including retirement costs. We have to find a way to grow, and I don't know, and I'm hopeful to understand some of the hiccups and some of the challenges that we have as a town, but, you know, we need to bring in revenue, and I'm hoping that Elm Street and potentially some growth out on 104 can help us to rebuild our infrastructure that's been neglected, there's no question. I mean, I, I have to look out all the time driving on roads all over town that are a mess, but, you know, there are priorities, and I think that, you know, instead of having a discussion of how expensive schools are and infrastructure, there has to be a very strong focus on what we need to do, and maybe looking at some other communities who are sort of residential communities, what have they done? What's outside of the box that we have not thought about? Before I ran, I talked to some contractors in town, and they told me, Matt, we had this discussion 15 years ago, 10 years ago, five years ago. The town asked to pull contractors together and ask, what are the challenges, what are the hiccups of building in town? And his response, you know, or his sentiment to that was, nothing has changed. And I can't say that that's the case, this is just what I'm hearing, but, you know, in terms of just revenue, that, it's so much has to be the focus, what could we do better as a town, as a town council, to really see some growth so we can help pay for some of the things that we need to pay for? That's it.
Thank you. Counselor George?
Thank you, Mr. President, just a couple things. One thing I just wanted to say was, on Saturday, I was able to participate with Counselor Gallagher on the town cleanup. The, the weather held off, it was, it was a great day. If anyone wants to see the impact of a handful of residents taking two hours to clean up, take a look at some of the pictures that are out there. The, the trash went into a, a garbage truck, but the nips that we pulled up in two hours was just, just eye-opening, which also leads to discussion around, hopefully, the legislative, legislation will, Beacon Hill will do the right thing about the bottle bill, but even still, it was, it was pretty eye-opening. We did it last year, and this year was, was as eye-opening as well, so, but the whole committee that put that on, Lions, everyone else did a fantastic job, it was a, it was a great time, and hopefully, we can continue that next year as well. In regards to the revenue, I, I think we all have heard it for a very long time, I will say, probably to Counselor Columbodis's observation, but a little bit more, is, I think we did a major, major win with Elm Street. We were finally able to address the street itself, which I don't think anyone who dealt with that would argue the fact that that street was in total disrepair, and who in their right mind would do a commercial development of any kind on a street where if you have any people either going to work or trucking, it's going to go up and down that street and potentially blow out tires and things of that nature? So, that's, that to me is something that probably should have been done 10 years ago, and we finally got it done, but that doesn't mean the work, you know, is, is going to stop, so I think we've done a very good job, and hopefully, we'll continue to do a good job of picking our battle spots to be able to make those improvements, stay within what we can afford, and then ultimately see that payoff, and I think we've, we've got one really good tenant there, and hopefully, there are more to come as well. I do want to say thank you to the, all the people involved in the Budget and Finance, Finance Committee, Solomonti's team and things of that nature, which is great. We have one more piece of the pie that needs to get done next week, so I will go on record as saying that I highly hope that the full, or at least the quorum of Budget and Finance and Finance Committee will meet in order for us to be able to finish that last piece of the budget pie. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wood?
Thank you. I will say that Budget and Finance always, already covered our, our piece of that pie. That's rather good. Thank you to all the volunteers that cleaned up, were a part of the cleanup process. I know Community Lions were a part of the organization, as well as Noon and, and many others. I, I couldn't make it, I was also volunteering over at, over at, on Water Street, the Bridgewater Lions had the annual youth fishing derby that we hold each year, and we had, I don't know what the total count on was the kids, but they had a good time, you know, hooking worms and pulling fish in, and I think all of, all the fish went back into the pond. I don't think anybody took them home, so it was catch and release. It's a lot of good prizes for the kids, it was a fun day, and luckily, the, the weather cooperated quite well. And we cook hot dogs for breakfast, so if you didn't do it this year, come on by next year with your kids. I will say, you know, being on the council, part of the budget process, part of, you know, voting on Elm Street and the whole diff project, and just keeping an eye out around town, one of the things that we're a little bit limited on is, is actual space where industry can happen. We have Elm Street, we have Outtoward, Halifax, there are several other places, Firework Circle is having some construction right now, but we don't have a Route 44, and we don't have some of the other pieces that other towns have, so we will need to get creative. One of the things I'm looking forward to out of the Economic Developer Community, no, sorry, the Economic Development Office, is the zoning changes, and maybe that will be beneficial to bringing business in and making it clearer where it can fit where, because we all hear stories about things that were businesses that shouldn't be businesses now, and that doesn't sit well with me, because if they were a business, why can't they be business again? Because that's where we see our growth, that's where we see growth that doesn't have an impact on the school systems, and things like that. So, looking forward to seeing some motion on that, and I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Chase?
Thank you. Just to pick up in, in some respects on your comment with regard to zoning matters, I, I'm reminded by a lot of citizens who have relayed to me their questions and comments and concerns about the proposed solar farm site in, in District 4, which is proposed for the former Imhoff Farm area off of Auburn Street, and I just wanted to point out to those citizens, as I already have, who I have spoken with, and to any others who are interested that, to really satisfy your questions and to learn more about the status of that special permit application, which is still pending before the Planning Board, I would suggest that you attend the Planning Board meeting, which is scheduled for tomorrow evening at, I believe, 6:30 here in the council chamber. That will be the continuation of the ongoing public hearing for the special permit process that would perhaps authorize the building of that particular solar site, and that is all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Souza? Thank you. Yeah, I want to thank all those who were instrumental in putting this budget together. I'm not going to go down a list again, we all heard that, but I, I have a little comment about business. We've all been hearing for many, many weeks, many, many years, that we need more businesses in town because we need more money. My conversation with the town manager focused around percentage of tax revenue on real estate tax coming in from residential versus business, and he says, this current year, we're collecting less than 10% of our taxes for real estate from business, and the rest is coming from residential. And he also said that in the past four years, that trend has gone, okay? That trend of businesses percentage dropping and residential rising. And what I'm really concerned about is, we hear that Jennifer came in, I think she's doing a good job, but we had a man in her position for more than a year full-time, so you can't say there was only part-timers there. We don't know what they're all doing, and we don't know where they're going, but why over four years does this rate keep dropping? And what's concerning me is, look how many more residences are on the books to be built before our school gets completed, and where are we going to be at that point in time if we don't really, like Councilman Wood said, we really need to do something with our zoning? We've taken zoning away from some of our main arteries coming into town, made them strictly residential, and that's only hurt us, and it's going to continue to hurt us, and we're just not going to be able to afford what we really like to without raising our taxes to a level that more and more of our senior citizens who can't afford to live in town and pay the taxes are out. Thank you. Thank you. I get the last comment tonight. The budget process, I too wanted to thank the Finance Director and his team for the detail that we got as a committee. I know everybody here didn't see the intricate detail, but I think it's out on the website. It was probably one of the better detailed budgets I've, I've seen, and when we asked for something, we got it, and we had some back and forth on some of the issues as time, as the budget process went on, but that's supposed to happen. It didn't meet everybody's needs, but it, I mean, it's a balanced budget, and hopefully, everyone will be able to work within that budget. And I sat in at least, at least three school committee meetings or budget meetings where they addressed their concerns about what they need to run their district in a better and efficient, efficient manner, but obviously, weren't able to meet their, all their needs this year. Hopefully, some things were met, but as has been presented to us, caution, there's a caution flag out there right now as far as where the economy's going, where the revenue is, is going down the road. We've had some good years with revenue, so we may have tougher budgets tonight, even though tonight's took five minutes. You know, future meetings could take five hours to solve, solve the budgets, and hopefully, we'll all be prepared for that. I too had enjoyed the cleanup for two hours on Saturday with everybody else, and want to thank all the volunteers that helped and came out to pick up some trash and nips, and the organizers, the Lions, and, and everyone that helped organize that. Again, this is a special meeting tonight, we didn't initially have this in our, in our books, so we do meet again next week for our third meeting in May, on May 21st, we'll